To order at nine oh two. And can I get a little call please?
Heather Owen.
Here.
Annette and Steph.
Here.
John McPherson.
Here.
Virginia Mendoza.
Yeah.
Mary Claypool.
Right here.
Sandra Ocampo.
Here.
Jaime Fernandez is absent with notification and Dr. Dineen Gass.
Present.
Okay, um, Dr. Bella, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, are there any changes or additions? I did see.
Yes, we would like to know if the board would entertain the idea of ending our meeting today in memory of our student from AB Ingham School who passed away.
Okay, so the vituary is for Emma Victoria Garcia. She passed away on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. She was a student at Arthur Lee Inghams and she passed away on her, in her home. Staff took it hard because this student had been in their MCO program since she was an infant. She attended ABI from the age of three to sixteen years old. And her grandfather would come in a few times a month to read books for the class. It was her grandfather who stopped by the school to inform the staff of her passing. Funeral services will be held on Saturday, June twenty-eighth at eleven AM at the Sacred Heart Church in Salinas. Very, very sad. All right, um, can I get a motion to?
Some move. Second.
It's been moved and approved, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Do we have any communications? Correspondence? Oh, sorry. Correspondence, yes, sorry. No? No, of course not. Okay, um, oral comments from the public, um, from anything that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, we're gonna move on to consent agenda, item three point one. Can I get? A motion?
Some move.
And again. It's moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, motion passes. We're gonna move on to staff recognition, four point one, MCOE main employees of the month for June two thousand twenty-five. Dr. Gass.
Yes, I was looking around the room to see if we have Maria Parker, but. Where? Yeah. And so we'll skip her and we will go to our next employee of the month, Julie De La Torre. Julie, come on up, Alicia Beth, please come up.
You guys can all come up.
All those fed folks, come on up, show your support. Julia has, well, I've had the great pleasure to work with Julia, um, years ago in Solidad at, it was San Vicente School, right? And then Roseboro, Roseboro. And, uh, just an amazing, amazing, um, person who gives her heart and her soul for everything she does. She's been working in the MCOE Special Education Division for, gosh, how long now?
Going on four years.
Four years. And just always, every day you walk in, she's got that smile on her face, always has the attitude of, I'm gonna go that extra mile and do whatever I can do to uplift our students and our families. Uh, you should have seen her in action at our special education field day. She was all over the field and just all that joy in her heart and was even willing to be interviewed by KSBWA, which that can be a little intimidating, but she did a great job. So, uh, let me turn it right over to, to Alicia's safe words.
Thank you, Dr. Gass, um, President Owen Trustees. Julia is one of our glue sticks, right, that holds our department together, you know, behind the scenes. You don't, you don't always see those things that are going on behind the scenes that, that really hold it together. And so amongst all the many tasks that Julia has, she's always willing, um, to step in and support staff. That's not necessarily in her job description. She, um, is always willing to go above and beyond. She's reliable, very dedicated to her job and the students and the families. And, uh, I appreciate her professionalism when she's supporting staff, our district partners. When we give referrals, as oftentimes she has to support those district partners in the process and our families. So, um, I really appreciate everything she does. She's so easy to work with, she's very kind and always has a smile on her face. And, um, we just really appreciate all the hard work she does.
I just second everything that Beth said, Julia is the heart of our department, um, one of the hearts. She's the first person who people are talking to when they call, again, whether it be a district person or a family member, helping to guide them if it's something that she's not sure of, she wants to learn more. And, um, example of that is like when a parent has called, she says, can I come and sit and listen to your answer? So next time I know how to respond to this question, which just shows that she's always willing to learn. She just wants to be there to help everyone in every way possible. The growth we've seen over the last few years has just been great as well. She's truly just one of our team members that, I don't know what we would do without.
Thank you very much.
Want to say a few words?
Um, yeah, so I just want to thank the board. Thank you, Dr. Gass, for, um, you know, acknowledging me and it literally takes a village. I would not be here doing what I'm doing without all of you. Each of you have had a little piece in my career and I really appreciate everyone, especially my team. They are amazing and go spend.
Any comments from the board? Yes, Sandra.
I'd just like to, um, Julia de La Torre, congratulate you for, um, your commitment to, um, Solidad District. And, um, I can see so much than what you have in you, lots of potentials in the future. So remember, the sky is the limit. Okay, shoot for the sky. And later on, you will not be the Assistant Bilingual Three, but you will be at a higher level position. And say hi to my dear son, Trusio Campo. Robert. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your service to MCOE.
Okay, and our next employee of the month is Rochelle. I might mispronounce this last name.
Eji.
Eji.
I don't know, we say Rochelle so we don't mess it up.
One of our special education teachers, also, um, at AB Ingham. And we had the great pleasure of going out and acknowledging her, um, gosh, was it last week or before? Well, all the weeks run together, but I think it was like a month ago, but okay. And what was so exciting, because the, the true tell of, um, how amazing a person is, is the reaction of the students and the staff that that teacher works with. When we walked in that classroom, I think the staff members, all the parent educators were more excited or as excited as Michelle. And so, or Rochelle, sorry, renaming her. They were, they just talked about how she's so positive and she just does so much for the kids, um, between the, I, I'm not gonna get it right, but the little store thing that they have.
She, she, she's a teacher for the eighteen to twenty-two year olds at ABI, so adult transition. So they have activities, you know, daily living, so the students are learning how to, you know, as much independence as they can. The student store and learn to buy things.
And her team just loves her innovation and the way that she cares for the kids. And you could see that in the response of the students as well. They were really excited that day when we came in and you can tell the beautiful relationship between the teacher and the students. And that's what it's all about, right, is the relationships and making sure that our kids, um, have that high quality program that they need and deserve. And so anyway, she's absolutely amazing. I'm guessing that she might, she.
Yeah, Rochelle, uh, Drolander asked her to come, but she's off, they're already off with ESY. So she probably already had plans and Rochelle's not able to be here today. But, um, Rochelle's one of our, again, one of our teachers at ABI. She does the adult transition program. She does a great job with the students, um, transitioning them, um, as far as when they're done with school. Does a great celebration, the graduation celebration, um, invites all the families, really does a great job putting slide shows together. And, and, um, so she does a great job recognizing the students and teaching them skills that we don't, that they can, um, do outside of, of classes, they transition out of the program, so.
Let me add, she makes the parents cry at the graduation ceremonies because they're so personalized and so beautiful to. One of the graduations, I think this was last year, the parents, um, were from Hawaii. And, uh, I'm not sure what the name of the mat is, but it's part of the culture and tradition to like roll out this very special mat. And they're very unique lays and certain, uh, cultural traditions. The teacher was able to incorporate that into the graduation ceremony, which meant so much to the parents and so much to the students. So that's what we mean when we say they go above and beyond in what they do. So anyway, we're sorry she couldn't be here today, but we're very, very blessed to have her on our team, so. Yeah, thank you, Beth. And then, uh, we just heard from Dr. Portes that Maria Parker, our Ed Services Employee of the Month, our, um, from management, is also not here today. Is she out, Sid?
She's out.
Yeah, she's out today, but also an absolute rock star. Those of you who went to the science fair, um, and to some of the STEM activities, she is the brainchild behind all of that. Um, I can tell you everything and all of our arts programming and so much more. She's just absolutely, absolutely amazing and a pleasure to work with. Again, makes everything she does really special for the students and for the families. And so we wanted to congratulate her as well. So sorry we missed her today, but, um, we understand. Summer break. Thank you.
Okay, um, item five, there's no unfinished business action items. So we're moving on to new business action items. Um, can I take these three together?
Separately. You know what, I would take them separately just because.
Okay. Yeah. Um, we're gonna do six point one, adoption of the Monterey County Alternative Education Program, Wellington Smith Junior School and Salinas Community School, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP, on page thirteen of the agenda. Uh, Dr. Bella.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, of us and community, uh, we brought to you at the last meeting for open hearing the LCAPs. And, uh, we seek your approval today, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this item?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Um, six point two, adoption of the Open Door Charter School, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, page two thou, uh, sorry, one hundred and twenty-one. Dr. Bella.
Yes, uh, as well with Open Door Charter, we bring the LCAP before you for approval.
A move for approval.
Looking. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Six point three, adoption of Monterey County Home Charter School, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, page two hundred and one. Dr. Bella.
Yes, and finally we bring to you the Home Charter LCAP. And be happy to take your questions and ask your approval.
Any questions?
Would you approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, item six point four, adoption of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget of the Monterey County Superintendent of Schools, page two thou, uh, sorry, two hundred and ninety-three. I don't know what I'm doing with my numbers today. Dr. Stanley.
Thank you. Um, yeah, that just kinda gave me shivers. I know Mary said last time my face lit up, but I'm like, oh my gosh. Sorry. Um, yes, so now that we have the LCAPs adopted, which is the way that the process has to go and with every, every school district too, that your LCAPs have to be adopted first and then you can go on and, and adopt your budget. And new laws are out there now that even, um, put penalties in place for our school districts and us if we don't adopt it in LCAP. Because if you don't adopt the LCAP, you don't get to adopt a budget and then everything shuts down. So, anyway, um, I put in front of you what the Saks report now looks like. Um, it's in very small print and it's very hard to read, right? Which is why we give you all the detail in books number one and number two in your budget books. So the only thing that I want to make sure to point out is that on the third page in, on the packet that I gave you, which says page one at the bottom, if you take a look at the twenty-four, twenty-five estimated actuals and then move over to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I know it's really small. And then move down to the.
Can you hold up what page we're supposed to, what's gonna?
It's just the third page in.
Okay.
On that packet.
Actually, fourth page.
Sorry.
They're gonna have to take your word on it.
Two page ones. So you go to the second.
Yeah, second page, okay, we're all there, I think. Thank you.
Um, where it says, um, twenty-five, twenty-six budget, under, or F, which says fund balance. I just want to point out that that ending fund balance of twenty-four million eight seventy oh one three is the same number that's on your board book right here with your ending balance. So what this report does is puts it into the format that the state wants to see it in a summarized version of what you've already looked at, at the Board Budget Study Session and the public hearings.
Any questions for Dr. Stanley? Yes.
Uh, as we sit here in, uh, end of June, uh, what's your level of confidence that the revenue numbers are gonna be? State revenue numbers are gonna be what has, has been projected?
I'm confident about the state.
Okay.
Um, but we just, um, saw the information that came out that said that the state had reached their budget deal. And, and so, um, the two point three percent cost of living, all the things that they said, um, were going to happen, have happened, um, including exhausting that Prop ninety-eight reserve fund, right? So I think for twenty-five, twenty-six, I feel very confident. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, right? I know. Thank you.
So with that, uh, I move the Monterey County Board of Education, after a budget study session, public hearing and per, and pursual of the proposed budget, does hereby adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six budget of the Monterey County Superintendent of Schools.
Second on that, and also I'd like to add that, uh, on the last board meeting, you make it very clear, uh, Dr. Colleen, when we asked, and I think it was John, will ask you, how solvent, you know, we were to be. And, and you said it, well, strongly for twenty-five, twenty-six, very solvent. So with that in mind, you got my support, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none?
Thank you, and now I'm going to the C land.
You need to take some of the money out of the budget to go.
Okay.
Only kidding, for clarification, only kidding.
Maybe for the weekend, she's going. She can go. Six point five, adoption of resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, fifty-seven, approval of assignment of delinquent property tax receivables, page two hundred and ninety-five. Dr. Stanley.
Yeah, this is always an interesting one. Um, many, many years ago, um, when the TEEER plan first came out, Monterey County and LA County decided that they were going to do this other methodology of, um, projecting and funding for delinquent taxes that, that came in from property owners. So every three years, we do a three-year resolution on this one. This comes back to the board to prove that we continue with this process with the delinquent tax JPA. And what they do is they sell the, the idea of how many, um, delinquent taxes are going to be received and they guarantee us with an eight percent, which is a good deal for us. I mean, we get, um, a bit more money than if we, and we get it upfront as opposed to waiting until, um, property owners eventually do, do their taxes. And this was a really interesting thing that happened when we had, um, COVID times and they delayed when the deadline was for the taxes to, to have to be paid. And so it was really kind of, um, well, we can't even predict that because we have no idea how many are going to come in because the deadline got pushed down. So, anyway, this is a, a vehicle for us to fund those delinquent taxes, receive a little bit more money in for us and for all of our districts. And we've, have been doing it for many years and we've got good advisors that, um, give us information and tell us how to move forward with this, so. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Stanley? Yes.
So, this project started in two thousand oh three, I believe so. Two thousand oh three?
Um, is that?
According to the information that you provide us with?
Yes.
Okay. And so far, MCOE, since the beginning of the membership, has earned up to three fifty-eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's, you're looking at the sheet, yes.
So I think my question to you is, is that categorical money or restricted money?
It's totally unrestricted money that comes back to us. Yeah. It's not offset. Yes, so it's, it's a good thing.
That's pretty good. I read through the whole paper and the process that they use when the properties are delinquent in, in, in the property taxes and how they hire these different companies, consultants to negotiate the deal. And, you know, sell them, make an income and give us some, not just, not just to us, but a lot of districts that are.
Yes, all, all of our districts are part of it.
Yes, revenues. Yeah, it's great.
Thank you.
Good for coming.
Any other questions?
So I moved to adopt resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five dash fifty-seven. Approval of assignment of delinquency property tax receivables.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, six point six. Um, it's two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Consolidated Application and Reporting System, CARSS, for Funding Categorical Aid Programs, Spring Release for Alternative Education Program, page three oh three. Dr. Bella.
Yes. Excuse me. Uh, yeah, so we bring to you the CARSS, uh, update. It's, uh, the spring release, this application is completed twice a year. Uh, this application includes our, uh, total expenditures, as you see there on the cover memo. Um, we apply for our alternative education program, uh, for these funds. Uh, and, uh, in, in these particular reports, we have to, uh, report expenditures dating back to two fiscal years into, uh, the current and then the planned, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So we seek your approval on this con app. Um, it is, um, one that we bring to you every year and happy to entertain your questions.
Any questions? Yes, Sandra.
Just to comment, are there any changes within last year to this year?
There, there is some subtle changes. Uh, some of this funding is dependent on the number of students enrolled. And so the number does fluctuate a little bit depending on our enrollment. But for the most part, we're staying within ten percent of what we've received in the past. And so it seems pretty stable. Um, there's slight changes because of the numbers enrolled as it's, the monies are generated based on the number of students enrolled. So it's not exactly what we've received in the past, but it's definitely within per, ten percent of what we've received in the past.
So it's different, which means that probably the enrollment is beginning to drop.
Uh, we've had some fluctuation, um, at the time that, uh, that this report is, uh, or the numbers that this, uh, report requires are the C beds day report, which is our enrollment in October. And so at that point in time, yes, our numbers were a little lower, but if you look at our program right now, it's increased in terms of numbers. And so, um, at the time of the C beds report, yes, we had fewer numbers than we did in the past. But now we've recovered some of those numbers and that is very typical because as the districts settle in, usually, um, some of our students, um, I dare say that when they are then settled in and then more exposures occur and so forth and so on, uh, truancy cases and so forth at the beginning of the year, they really don't start developing until later, until December, January, when our numbers start picking up. And so for the time that, um, that the numbers were captured in October, yes, we were a little lower, but then we managed like every year to recover numbers later, uh, once districts started referring students to us.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
Some move. Second on that.
Um, all right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Okay, we're on to item six point seven, Association of California County Boards of Education, ACCBE, Strategy Planning Summit in Sacramento, August sixteenth and seventeenth, page three hundred and fifty-one. Dr. Gass.
Yes, so, um, as you all know, we are now members of ACCBE and they will be hosting this strategic planning, um, session. Uh, at one of our prior meetings, you nominated Heather Owen to be our representative to ACCBE. So this is a request for Heather to attend this planning summit in Sacramento, um, in order to represent.
Any questions?
Well, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve and, and speak to the motion. Um, I looked through the little information that they have. The thing that I'd like to see come out of this session is a clear understanding of the organizational structure that the organization intends to achieve. What I mean by that is the old CCBE was basically a volunteer-run organization that lived under the legal authority of CSBA, meaning the insurance of CSBA covered the activities of CCBE. Um, you know, liability insurance, all of those things. The, uh, government relations people were under the umbrella of CSBA. The executive director was under the umbrella of CSBA. What I've seen so far is that this is sort of, is still a volunteer, this is a volunteer organization where it's being run by volunteers, meaning county board members. Is that what it's gonna stay as? Because if it is, it really, you know, the, the things, the, the things that they can do are really, really limited, which is fine if that's the, the intent. Or does it want to be something bigger? And, you know, I'm, if it wants to be bigger, it needs to be bigger, meaning an executive director, you know, staff, insurance. You know, all those things that an organization, a not, you know, a nonprofit organization needs to, to have versus being a, just a volunteer organization. So, you know, I think it's, either way, I think there's a future for it, in my humble opinion, but it's gotta decide what it wants to be when it grows.
Yeah.
So I, I make a, a motion to approve.
Second for the discussion? Mary, you have a, a comment?
I just had a comment. Uh, back when they brought it to the board and we authorized five thousand dollars to become a member, I guess that's what it was. I was a little reluctant because I don't understand exactly, like John said, how this organization is gonna work, how the organization comes together, how much in the future it's gonna cost all, uh, county boards to become and continue to be a member. Because once you get, get it up and going, like John said, there's gonna be costs associated with it. Because I don't think it can function as strictly a volunteer organization and be effective. I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't think so. And so they're gonna have to come up with a budget and that budget has to come from the members unless they get an awful lot of sponsors that will support it in the future. And I was looking at what they call is the notes for the final agenda. It was a little confusing because I didn't understand where it says discuss. Use June nine board meeting to review and finalize. And then they're limiting it to twenty to twenty-five board of directors? Is that to attend this meeting?
To attend the strategic planning meeting, I think so.
And why did they restrict it to twenty or twenty-five? I mean, I don't know how many board, how many members are already, but there was a lot of questions.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they did that.
My comment is, I guess that, I hope you can come back and answer some of these questions that we have because there's a lot of them.
Okay.
So, thank you for attending.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Just following through, um, that it's a volunteer organization. Uh, so I'm assuming that every member that is invited, it's a volunteer. You know? You know, participation. And because it is a volunteer participation, um, I guess are we as, as, as board members um, have to come out with all the expenditures to go to these conferences on a yearly basis? Or how many trainings a year are they gonna be having? What I'm getting through John info and Mary is that there's not really total, a, an organization yet. There's no infrastructure yet. So to me is like, if it's something that is worth it to do, then would you set aside some budget to be part of this? But if it's something that is not going anywhere and it's gonna cost us money to send someone to these trainings. And in reality, whatever information she or he will bring back uh, is not coming from the organization. So what's the idea behind the meeting? That's my question. And um, what, what I read through here is that um, they're trying to cover you for, I believe, meals. But the, I think, yeah, the um, hotel or the MBNB? Are they covering as well?
No. So that I think they're asking for the county boards to cover the lodging. And they're trying to cover the meals for us. So it would be for, for me to go. It would be travel and the hotel or Airbnb.
So how much are we talking, Dr. Colleen, for this trip? How much it'll cost our taxpayers to, to have Madam Chair to attend this meeting?
They have not, no flight, just driving, yes, because it's Sacramento. Um, and then they have not um, selected which hotel, so we don't have a cost of a room yet. They have not planned it. But what the, to answer your first question, what this meeting is about is trying to plan and organize and get some of these um, questions that like Mary and John are bringing up answered. So they're bringing, they're inviting a group of people together to try to um, come up with the structure of the organization. Because it is a new organization.
I think that's the point you just touched on that one. Because I'm under the impression that every time we go to a board training is through a CSBA, which is educational leadership. Programs in the students, you know, education for teachers. Um, and to me, this one has not much to do with CSBA.
It has nothing to do with.
I know, and this is my point. So it's a different identity. So I congratulate you for being invited, but I cannot support this. Because first of all, we don't have a dollar sign here saying how much it'll cost for you to attend this meeting. And to me, I cannot approve something that is not clearly and transparent to me. And second of all, that what you're gonna do is to be part of an infrastructure design goals. Of this non, which is not even a nonprofit organization, is a volunteer organization. So to me, it's like, if I remember well, we have budget for trainings through CSBA. And this is county, so I'm not, I'm not totally in favor of this.
Oh, actually, can I just clarify that the policy on board training is for both CSBA and this organization? So it's not just for CSBA because I think this is an organization that supports county boards of education. So we, that's part of what the policy is. It's not just CSBA. I do think the questions that everybody that you all have had are good ones. And that's what we will find out during your attendance at this. I don't think it's really a training. It's more of a, of an, of a, you know, trying to find out what's happening with this organization. And I think that's what we need to find out is, is it something we wanna be a part of? We have decided at this point to be a part of it. And until we decide that we're not gonna be a part of it, because it's going in a direction that we as a board don't agree with. I think we have to support um, our learning about where we're going. So that's, that's how I feel about it. I don't think it's a training for Heather. It's a training, it's not a training at all. It's a, it's an organizational meeting to try to figure out where ACCBE is going. And it could be very powerful either as a, an organization to just support count, California County Boards of Education. Or even maybe more powerful if it becomes um, even more than that. So we don't know yet where it's going.
Thanks, Annette, John?
Yeah, uh, Annette said it perfectly. To be perfectly honest, I have been somewhat um, skeptical. But this organization at this point in time has the full support of the Los Angeles County Office of Education. Which there are all other county offices of education in the state, and then there's the Los Angeles County Office of Education.
They are big.
And one of CSBA's challenges in my time being associated with it is they have not effectively looped in LA CO, uh, LA County Office of Education. So um, I am interested. They have not, have not. Um, so, you know, if you've got, if you got the, you know, the biggest dog in the, yeah. Participating, it's got some potential. So uh, that's why I'm in support of Heather going and asking lots of questions.
Yes, Mary.
So how much money did they put in?
I think they, uh, more than we did. Yeah, they.
It's by size.
Yeah, so yeah, it was, it's by, it's by, uh, oh, Dr. Gus, help me, it's, it's not.
By region, or, or sorry, classes, like class one, class two, class three.
Class of size of county.
Their own class.
There's class one, which is Los Angeles, and then there's class two, which is Riverside and San, and San Diego and Santa.
Do we have a copy of that?
Yeah.
When we got the.
I don't remember what they.
The fees.
Yeah.
We saw the fee structure. Can, can I just make one quick comment? Um, it is unusual to approve an item that doesn't have a dollar amount fixed to it. We couldn't get a dollar amount for the reasons stated, but if the sport is more comfortable saying you, i- if you choose to approve it, you could say not to exceed a thousand or fifteen hundred or something like that, so that you aren't. I don't either. I, I do not think it would be that much, but always having a not to exceed when we don't have a correct estimate might be a.
It's one day, right?
It's one, yeah, I would go, it's one and a half days. So I show up on the sixteenth, that I think it starts at three or something like that. Um, and then this, and then we, and then I would spend one night and meet again on the seventeenth and then come home.
Okay, so one night in.
One night in a hotel in Sacramento. And I told um, her that I was going to do it on the July agenda. So she's expect, if we want to wait until they figure out the hotel, we could put it, we could wait till the July meeting. Find out the hotel room.
I, I made the motion, I stand by the motion.
Okay, Virginia?
I hear everybody's comment, but I think when, I, I personally, I don't like when someone invite me to a place and don't give me all the information. So, uh, maybe you guys get, or you, when you go there, you can talk to them and say next time, provide all the information. Once you release uh, an event that is going to happen, please provide all the information. Because it happened like one of the events that I went, I got, I was requesting copy of the agenda and I got it really early in the morning when I was already, already driving to the place. So, uh, that's a little un, not professional from my point of view. For our organization not to be that or well organized, that when they release information, they should provide everything. So then you can get a, um, an idea.
Right, right.
Um, usually when they say this event is gonna be at um, uh, Hilton Hotel, then you know what's the price for Hilton Hotel. So you start getting at least an idea how much you are gonna spend. Um, maybe you can forward my.
Yes.
Comment to them. Thank you.
Did you wanna say something? Okay, so John has a, a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, yeah, he did such, she seconded for discussion. She seconded for discussion.
Okay, all those in favor, or say aye? Any opposed? Alright, motion passes.
Right, okay, so just for clarification. So John, you moved. Sandra, you seconded the motion for Heather to attend.
Yeah.
And the votes are after one, five in favor.
Five in favor, one against.
Could you read um, the um, recommendation?
Yeah, John's recommendation was that the Board of Education approve the travel request for Heather to attend the ACCBE Planning Summit. Um, so that was his motion and then you seconded the motion.
Okay, and it was one, two, three, four, five in, in favor?
In favor of the motion.
One against.
And one against. So just clarification for the record.
Six point eight, letter in support of North Salinas High School Track and Field Athlete Clara Adams, page three fifty-five.
I'm so sorry, no, you did not, but just real quick question. We have our bi-national teachers here, and I'm just wondering if you might want to skip to eight point one.
I would be happy to do that.
Back into classrooms.
Yes, I would be happy to do that. Thank you. Um, so eight point one, Monterey County migrant education program, bi-national teacher exchange program. Page three sixty-three and your agenda, uh, Dr. Vella.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson and Board. Uh, it's my pleasure today to welcome Director Constantino Silva, the migrant education program and three of our phenomenal bi-national teachers. Uh, and so today, uh, Mr. Costa, Mr. Constantino, Mr. Silva, along with the teachers, will be presenting to you the great work that our bi-national program does for our migrant students and so.
Thank you, Dr. Vella. Good morning, President Nolan, Dr. Gus, uh, board members, without the ask. Good morning to all of you. Yes, I'm very excited to be here this morning to um, share the great work that our bi-national teachers are doing with migrant students, with our migrant students this summer. Do you have a presentation um, ready? So uh, it is a group of eleven teachers. We're very fortunate this year. We uh, were able to bring a lesson, if you remember, two years ago. We felt very fortunate that we had a group of six. Uh, this time we have a group of eleven. So um, we'll share some information about the program with you. And then um, one of them actually has a, a brief message that they would like to um, to give to the board. And uh, and then we'll open it up for a question. Okay, so um, next slide, please. Oh, I have, I do have it.
Is it there?
Okay. Well, there, thank you. Um, okay, so uh, this program exists because there's uh, an overarching memorandum of understanding between uh, the Department of Education, the US Department of Education and the Secretaria de Educación Pública, which is the Mexican Department of Education, right? And uh, it's a hugely collaborative uh, program, right? It has so many different levels. Um, in, in the Mexican government, there's the SEP, that's the, 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 which is again, the, the equivalent of the, of the Department of Education. There's the uh, Secretaria de Relaciones Exteriores, the Foreign Service uh, branch of, of, of the Mexican government. The Instituto de los Mexicanos en el Exterior, which provides services to the Mexican consulates, to Mexicans abroad. Um, and this exists all over the world. And of course, we work with the, uh, the, our, our uh, representatives here. And then the Program Binacional de Educación Migrante de Proben, which is the uh, the, the Mexican counterpart to migrant education. Uh, and so uh, that all happens in collaboration and in conjunction with the Mexican consulates here. And so of course, our uh, closest Mexican consulate is the San José de Salve, Mexican consulate. And so we work closely with uh, uh, personnel there and the Consul General, the, the consul general there at the uh, Mexican consulate. And of course, here in California, the Department of Education, the California Department of Education, migrant education office. And then the regions that uh, choose to participate. I remember uh, back a few years ago, it used to be seven or eight migrant education regions that participated in this program. This year it's only three. It's us and two others across the state. Um, this program has, has existed for over thirty years in our region and in the state. One of the constants of this, of this program, of this exchange program has been Region sixteen. We have been an active participant um, and beneficiary of this program. And we're very happy to do that because of the great work that um, that happens through the participation of these teachers in our, in our programs. And so the teachers are fully credentialed and experienced teachers in Mexico. They uh, they come prepared to work in academic areas, uh, but especially uh, as well in cultural areas. They provide a lot of cultural enrichment uh, activities with the students and uh, and, and parents. And essentially, this program leverages the students' cultural and linguistic uh, assets, right? To, in, in, in the service of, in the benefit of uh, increasing academic achievement uh, among the migrant education students. It also increases pride in both sides of their bi-national, bi-cultural and bilingual heritage and experience. Right, they are, they are uh, uh, rich in, in that regard, that they, they tap into both sides of their identity. Uh, and they work again with students and parents and collaborate with our uh, local teachers who are the teachers of record. They are housed with host families who agree to, to, um, to put them upright, to, to house them for uh, the, the duration of, of their participation. They receive a daily stipend. Um, they're not, we don't hire them, we, we can't, they, but we give them a daily stipend for their food, their transportation and other expenses. Um, and, and a part of the program, the J-one visa program that they uh, come through is uh, receive uh, exposure to US culture, culture as well. So, you know, Jun- Juneteenth just happened, uh, Fourth of July just happened. And uh, everything, just the richness that we have, or, or is coming up. Um, and, and the, and the richness that we have here in, in Monterey County, that we're gonna be taking them to the peninsula on, on the weekend. And so anyway, just exposing them to uh, US culture as much as possible. The program dates, again, I said eleven teachers. Uh, the program dates generally are June fifth to uh, July twentieth. But that, those aren't the dates for all of the teachers. Different uh, districts have requested teachers. And we bring them according to the dates of the summer programs to which they're assigned. So um, Santa Rita, Salinas City, uh, Salinas Union High School, Alisal, Gonzalez, Greenfield and King City are the participating districts this year. And so it depends on their summer school calendar. And so some, some came as early as June fifth, um, and some will be leaving as late as July twentieth. Uh, and some of the sample topics over the years, and, and maybe they can share a little bit about, about what they brought this year. It's really early on in the program and, and uh, and you'll see I have pictures of bi-national teachers at work. Just not them because it's too soon for me to have uh, pictures of them. But you know, some of the topics are migration and the monarch butterfly, uh, Day of the Dead. Um, different carnival celebrations in Mexico, traditional Mexican toys and, and other topics. Uh, um, for example, hats is, is, is uh, is an interesting topic that one of the teachers brought this year, and maybe he can comment on that just a moment. Um, and here, just from a couple of years ago, the pictures um, of, of the different cultural activities. Uh, and some of you were able to come out to the programs. Thank you so much for, for your, for your, uh, for your participation there. It was great um, to show that, that uh, support for the teachers and, and the districts for everything that, that the teachers are doing um, in, in the summer programs. Including dance, um, singing, poetry, uh, different arts and crafts. And so again, these fixtures are from two years ago. But um, but yeah, just a rich program that uh, um, we always benefit from having the, the bi-national teachers here. And they're a big hit with the students, they're a big hit with the parents, and they're a big hit with the staff. The staff always feels like, oh my gosh, we, we learned so much. Um, uh, one of the things that they always comment on is um, they don't have the richness of the materials and resources in Mexico that we have here. And our teachers here often say, oh my God, they can do so much with so little. It, it, it just took, you know, just a few items and, and they created this huge, you know, elaborate activity. Um, or, you know, product and mask or whatever it is. And it's just, uh, and it's an amazing, they were just commenting on that this morning about, oh my God, they have so much. So many materials here, so much, uh, so many resources. And so that's always kind of a cultural, um, um, you know, aspect that is commented on, on a lot. But um, they just do an amazing thing and, and our teachers here uh, feel equally enriched to um, them. They leave uh, also very, uh, just so, so just appreciative and enriched by the uh, pedagogical learning, right? They leave also very, just so appreciative and enriched by the pedagogical learning, right? The teaching learning that happens, but just the general cultural learning that they come away with. And with today, there's return migration. There's a lot of return migration from the US to Mexico. And they become ambassadors of how to work more closely with students that have international and migratory backgrounds. So just an overall very enriching program for both countries. And so just to wrap things up, again, I mentioned, we're trying to organize a meeting with the consul general, but she's a very, she's a very busy person. And we're not sure that we're going to be able to pull it off, but hopefully, a meeting with the consul general. She's always very supportive of this program as well and has asked, Constantino, please tell me when the teachers are here. I really would like to see if I can meet with them. I've been in contact with the consulate, and it may or may not work out. But anyway, we're trying to organize that. Again, an excursion up to the peninsula. They have different outings with their host families, with their schools. If there's a field trip, of course, we bring them along. And then at the end, they'll have closing ceremonies. And we've asked that in their districts at the end of their program that we have some kind of a closing event where they get to highlight and showcase all of the great activities and work that they are doing during the summer. And with that, maybe I can ask my, also, I, my apologies, I failed to introduce our teachers, right? We have with us today Rosario Flores, Rebecca Garcia, and Antonio Cabral. Thank you for being here this morning, and sorry to pull you away from your activities with the students. And the representative is going to be Rosario Flores, who has a little message, a brief message for you.
Thank you. Hello, Martin.
Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you for welcoming us, the bi-national teachers from Mexico, from Zacatecas, Jalisco, Michoacan, Guanajuato. We are truly grateful for your hospitality and for your support and for the opportunity of learning new ways of teaching, as what Constantino said. We are very surprised that here we have everything to work. And sometimes it makes sense we don't have windows, even doors, and their rooms are full of water if there's threatening. But I'm very excited to be here, along with also my coworkers. So we're truly thankful. And, well, Constantino said, we have to share something about our work. And I'm creating some masks from a carnival in Guanajuato, the school de Torito. They are creating, so the elaboration and everything they are working on, and they are very excited to work and to show to their parents their learnings, my students are very excited. I don't know why, but they keep bringing me more students from North San Antonio every week. So I think I'm doing well. And Mr. I, I, Jose, you have another name. Arturo, I'm sorry. Arturo, he's creating some hats. And Rebecca is working with. And you're a voter from Jalisco and dancing and some. Some art class. So the thing is, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And so we're here. If you have any questions for us, for the teachers, yes?
I would like to know where you guys are from. What is there?
Okay, Guanajuato, I'm from Guanajuato, specifically Leon, Guanajuato.
I'm from Jalisco, in city Guanajuato.
Presnios, Zacatecas.
Presnios. And I didn't get your name.
Arturo. Arturo Cabral. Well, my full name is Luis Arturo Cabral, but I don't like Luis.
Hey, let us say you can change your name. And Rebecca, I didn't get your last name, I didn't.
Garcia.
Garcia. So, welcome. And it's exciting to have you guys here. It is, I always say Mexico has a great culture, relaxation, everything, food, culture. Oh, my gosh, I can spend a lot of time talking about it, but you can see that I'm Mexican. You know, I love Mexico. So I really want to thank you for coming into this county and sharing your knowledge with our students. And that's something that I really love to happen. I have done a little bit of that work in the past myself. And because I think they need to know what is, where we are coming from, where the parents are coming from. And I think that's important to make that connection with them. So in the future, when they go to Mexico, they know that is something that is, the roots are coming from Mexico. So thank you so much. I would like to talk to each one of you later. Doesn't work in another place, and I think it will be very interesting to talk to you. So I will pass my business card up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take Sandra and then John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to say thank you so much, Señor Constantino, for the good job that you've been doing for MCOE, the leadership, they reach out to the Mexican consul to keep this project alive, especially when you implement it with our little kids, you know, and reach out and teach not just their culture, but also their tradition and the family values that we need a lot of help with. Because some of our Mexican parents think that when they send the kids to school, it's for them to teach them the family values and the education as well. And so when our teachers from Mexico come here and work with the little kids, middle school and high school, they really help us out a lot, not just the county, but the whole districts. And second of all, I'd like to say welcome to the three of you, or actually, no, the eleven of you, because we only have three of you today here with us. And I'm very pleased that you're bilingual. Now, that isn't required for me to get you in the MCOE program, but it's a plus, actually. And I go back in time, I think it was two years that we visited South County, and the teachers from Mexico, none of them will speak English. So my message to these young teachers from Mexico was, ¿Por qué no? ¿Cuál es la diferencia? Take advantage of being trilingual, bilingual. And so I said, please take this message to our fellow teachers in Mexico. Que aprendan inglés también. Que conozcan la cultura americana también. And I'm glad it's happening because the results are here, here, you know, speaking English is a second language. And also, I was really impressed attending and visiting those elementary districts because those teachers were dynamite in the classroom. You know, they were teaching the little kids how to do magic. You know, how to fall in love with the classroom, with the colleagues. Also, Doctor Gass was with us in that visitation. And at that moment, I fall in love with this project, and it's been going on for thirty years. And the best that I can say to you is, sígalo, activando año con año. Hopefully, la otra vez fueron menos horas o once. Maybe la próxima vez es veinte.
Fifteen, twenty, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, who knows, who knows, who knows. Pero, we got to keep the cycle growing, you know, changing. And my message to the three of you here today is like family values, culture, language, and more than anything else, is building the trust with the students. Once you gain that trust, they're totally yours. And they're like sponges. They're absorbing everything you're teaching them. I was so pleased when I saw these districts in South County and the little kids saying, I love my kids. When are you coming back? So that says it all. So, en otras palabras, bienvenidos. Siéntanse en su casa. Y nosotros, Virginia y yo, somos de México. Cruzamos el puente legalmente. Y no tenemos miedo a la ice. Así que, bienvenidos. Anything you guys need, ahí está el señor Constantino.
Thank you.
No tengan miedo de preguntar. Do not be afraid to ask, to reach out if you need help. Thank you so much. God bless you. Dios los bendiga, eh?
Gracias.
Gracias.
John? Yeah, so this is my fourteenth year on the board, and this is one of my favorite meetings of the year. Because over the years, we've met such incredible people just like yourselves, and it's so very inspiring and so very thankful that you are willing to, you know, kind of put yourself out there and do this program. And it's a great benefit to our students as well as our county office, so thank you.
So can we take a picture?
Let's do it.
Yes, I will, I will.
Okay, nos combinamos, migrant head. Bilingual, bi-national.
You're our very honored guest.
Thank you, thank you. Stand over here.
And surface moves.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Two more, two more. Sorry, sorry. Okay, and we two one. Three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I hope you have a good time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You did a fantastic job. Speaking in your second language, not your first. Yeah, thank you for coming.
Yeah, I think a five minute.
Ah, okay. Thank you so much.
Gracias, un placer.
Thank you.
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 Are we ready? Okay, we need a minute. Lassaro. Lassaro. Lassaro.
Lassaro.
Lassaro.
Yes.
At ten thirteen, we're on item six ten, interdistrict transfer appeal number twenty-four, twenty-five, oh, four. Doctor Gus, can you please make the introductions?
Yes, here with us today, wait, I'm so sorry. Doctor Pores, would you put the podium back?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I can't see the audience. And you'll need that podium here shortly. And also, if we could ask the parents to come up to the front row here and if we could ask the district representative to come up to the front row on the left side of podiums, that would be great. And now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the staff members that are with us and then our board of trustees. So we have Doctor Pores, Deputy Superintendent Cindy Dunn, my executive assistant. I'm Doctor Gus, Monterey County Superintendent of Schools. We have Lee Butler, our Human Resources Officer, and Doctor Ernesto Vella, our Student Services Assistant Superintendent. And then, in front of you here, who will be making the decision today, we have our County Board President Heather Owen, our Vice President Annette Easte, Trustee John McPherson, Trustee Virginia H. Mendoza, Trustee Mary Claypool, and Trustee Sandra Ocampo.
Okay, I'm going to dispense with a reading of the letter of appeal unless one or more of the parties request that the letter be read. Any requests for the letter to be read?
And the entire board has a packet, they have your letter and all related information.
Okay, we're on to number six, state the powers of the County Board and interdistrict attendance appeal hearings, Doctor Gus.
Wait, thank you. And bear with me, I'm going to be reading a very long statement here, but this is a legal proceeding and so we always read it in the record. So this is a hearing by the Monterey County Board of Education on an appeal filed by or on behalf of student Samuel Santiago of the decision of the Salinas City Elementary School District to deny an interdistrict attendance agreement for the student who attended Santa Rita Union School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The student's parents resides within the boundaries of the Salinas City Elementary School District. A summary of the case has been prepared by the County Office of Education and has been distributed to the County Board of Education. Section four, six, six, zero, one of the California Education Code authorizes the Monterey County Board of Education to make a decision on this appeal. The County Board may also send the matter back to the district that denied the interdistrict attendance request if there is significant new evidence introduced during this appeal hearing. The County Board Policy five-one-one, seven point one on interdistrict attendance appeals directs the members to review the basis of the district's denial to determine whether there are unusual conditions that justify intervention by the County Board. Also, granting the appeal must result in improving the educational and/or health interests of the student to such a critical degree that substantial positive results in the educational services to the student will result.
Thank you, Doctor Gus. I will now explain the procedures for the hearing and we will start the hearing. A, the appellate may state reasons for the County Board to overturn the denial of the interdistrict transfer. And you please direct your statements and comments to the board. And then, B, the district may state their reason or reasons for the County Board to uphold the district's decision to deny the interdistrict transfer. C, the appellate may succinctly state any final rebuttal. And then, D, the district may succinctly state any final rebuttal. E, there will be questions from the board and please direct your comments to the board. And then, the hearing will be closed and the board will deliberate. All right, so we will begin with, A, appellate may state the reasons for the County Board to overturn the denial of the interdistrict transfer. And if you want to come to the podium, please, here. Thank you.
Good morning and thank you for taking us this morning for Samuel David Santiago. He's our child and thank you for taking your time and picking us this morning.
I'm really nervous because you've been, we're not good at public speaking.
Just talk to us and tell you, tell your side of the story about why you want your child to be in Santa Rita School District and what your reasonings are.
Well, his older brother is already there at the school, so that's like our main thing here. They get babysat in the area and they get walked, like he gets walked to school. So we're trying to keep them together, it's his first year in school, Samuel's, so, oh my God, I'm sorry, guys. So we're just trying to keep them together and start a good foundation for his first year of school. So, that's why, that's why we're here. And we're hoping we can get a second shot at it and, you know, explain to you guys why we want to move forward and hopefully get a different, I'm clear, but we're not further again.
Thank you. The district, please, may come forward?
Good morning, we're here now, we're, Superintendent Gus, for members, colleagues, members present. My name is Estela Hernandez, and I'm the Executive Director of People's Services with Salinas Elementary School District. And I'm here today to explain why the district would like you to uphold the decision to deny the interdistrict transfer request for Samuel Santiago. As it aligns with the Education Code four, six, six, zero, zero, NAR, Administrative Regulation, as long as you said. Based on that, the request that means that very criteria requiring the approval of the transfer, as the district is required to approve interdistrict transfers only under the following two conditions, which are, the student is the child of an active duty military parent and the student is documenting, they document the victim of bullying. The Santiago's family request is based on concerns around family dynamics and sibling placement. And the district understands these concerns and values and families for each, and however, these factors are not grounds for mandatory answer, you know, although sibling has, sibling has previously been approved under, we know. Each new request must meet legal criteria independently. Prior approvals do not guarantee future transfers, particularly Salinas Elementary School District. Like many districts are working to balance resources and decline any moment. So Salinas City Elementary School District, knowing that we have a child entering the system, we'd like to have the child experience the district. Is, and it's an approval for TK, but it's an approval for eight years if, if, if the student is to leave the district because our district has TK through six. So it offers, Salinas City offers a robust transition kindergarten program, a count on entry. This, this was the student school residence. The program includes developmentally appropriate instruction, social and emotional learning, and extended, extended daycare to, you know, to no cost after school program, supporting working family schedules. So while the district recognizes the Santiago's family's personal circumstances, it is not legally obligated to approve this transfer. And we use the student's needs and be fully met within the district, and we respectfully ask that you affirm that.
Thank you. All right, you may come up and offer a rebuttal.
In regards to how, sorry, your name, Dr. Hernandez, had mentioned, yes, the school provides day, daycare or childcare after school. We now have an affordable childcare where our children are comfortable and happy and we know they are. We've all heard these terrible stories and, you know, I mean, and that's a fear as a parent. I'm sure most of you are parents, you guys know the fear. And Sammy, I want to be and thus being able to take them to the same place and they go to the same school. It's not just a benefit for us, but a benefit for our child to be successful in life and not have that stress of, where's my brother? And another one, where's my brother? So we really want you guys to consider being able to have them go to the same school where they're already attending.
All right, thank you. Can I ask one question? Yes.
Can we ask some questions?
We're going to take questions at the end, is that okay?
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, we did questions at the end. Thank you, okay, the district may succinctly state any final rebuttal.
Just basically, they in the family know that the students will be together at Camden, so we would have automatic both, even if they are students of the district.
Can we add something to our statement, can we add something to our statement in regards to what's the doctrine you said?
Sure.
Yes.
Our oldest child, Lazarus, has already attended Camden. And we had an unfortunate experience there where my child was facing bullying at the school. We spoke to the teacher, we spoke to the principal, we spoke to everybody that we needed to speak with, and the bullying did not stop. And that's why we made the decision to have him change schools where he now does not face bullying. He has improved his grades, he is learning a lot more, and he is not nervous and crying to not go to school because of the bullying he faced. And this is why we are eager to have Samuel go to the same school as his brother's attending now. And we just, mental health is the main issue here. Our, our child does not need that stress and our child does not need to be worrying about who's going to bully him next. And just based on the experience we had, we do not want them to attend Camden.
Thank you. Okay, so now, Mary, we can take questions.
I have one question, how long have you, your children been with the current babysitter?
This last year, we had a switch because my dad used to be able to take care of him, but due to health issues, he's not able to help us anymore, so we had to go find someone to be able to help us.
So for the last school year?
The last year and a half, so they were there since last, I worked a little bit last summer too, so they were there. Started in summer and then transitioned to the rest of the year.
John?
For the family, for the older child?
Yes.
How many, how long were they, what years were they at Camden? And I assume that the interdistrict transfer was approved for that, now how long have they been at Santa Rita?
He was at Camden for Kinder, his full Kinder year, and then he was at Santa Rita District this last year for first grade.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. How difficult will it be for you to find another care provider?
I don't know, to be honest, I feel like the way we have it set up and the relationship we've had with our babysitter and the kids have formed with them, the trust that they have formed with her. I feel like, one, I don't know how expensive it's going to be to go with someone else, to find someone else, to work around our work schedule as well, as early as we drop them off. So I don't, I don't know, I feel like it might be hard as a parent to, to be able to trust someone else with our children. Thank you, manager.
Any other questions?
You know, I think she answered my questions, you have other questions.
All right, I'm going to close the hearing and we will deliver.
Benim Chair?
I'm sorry, yes.
I just didn't have a chance to make a comment about the importance that we place on social, emotional support for our children. Based on the last comments, any complaints related to bullying are investigated. Those come to my office, you know, from procedures I handle specifically pertaining to any claims related to bullying. I checked the record, there was no indication documented in the system during the time Santiago was there. That was to have shown an investigation in place for a complaint submitted officially. So just wanted to make a point that mental health is a priority for our district. Social, emotional learning with counselors and others supporting it is something that is about most important to us for the well-being of all.
I have a question.
Yes, Virginia, to Norma? Yes.
Can you tell me, you mentioned earlier that you talked to the teacher and the principal and as many people, or you guys mentioned that, talked to different people about the bullying on your son? How long this took you to talk to different people?
As soon as it started, my son did a complete change of who he was, he used to love going to school, and then one day he started coming home and just was a different kid, so as soon as it happened, I kind of started investigating, he didn't want to tell me right away, then he did tell me. And as soon as it happened, I do have on Parents Square when I was, he was at Camden, I was going, I was talking to the teacher. So it is, I don't know if you guys access that, but I have talked to her. So I stepped in as soon as I figured it out, as soon as he let me know. We talked to the vice principal and we talked to the principal as well, so why it wasn't documented, I'm not sure, but we did.
So you didn't read, you didn't give them any writing complaint to the school? It was, everything was verbal?
Yeah.
Okay.
They didn't, they never told us to put it in writing, we had a lot of sit downs with Mr. He told us call Mr. B. Yeah, and so we had a lot of sit downs with him as well. He made it feel like that was, we had that comfort and that he was doing what he could and nothing changed, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your.
I have one more question for you, so when you made the request for San, sorry, Lazarus?
Yes.
To move over to Santa Rita School District, did you mark bullying in the interdistrict transfer? Is that, was that the reason why they, they supported that interdistrict transfer?
No, it was childcare.
Childcare.
Yes, so like I said, my dad started having some health issues, he used to help us take care of my kids. But he just wasn't able to anymore, so that's when we did the, the switch. I mean, like, he said, the only reason we don't want to send him back to Camden is because of that, we also don't have anyone to help us in the area to take him, to take him to school, we still have the, my dad help us, but I get to work pretty early as well, I work for Salinas High School. So that was the main thing when we switched them.
So just so I understand it, one year ago, the transfer was approved to Santa Rita based on childcare services. He attended kindergarten there or first, first?
Yeah, first grade.
First grade there, and then you put in a new renewal for this upcoming year for your older son, and that was approved for him to attend second grade in Santa Rita. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I have a question for you.
Yes.
I'm sorry. You give me the.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you instruct that teachers and the personnel in the school that when a parent comes with a verbal complaint, for them to do a writing complaint?
So, two things, the staff is trained to offer the actual procedure, the uniform complaint procedure form if the parents say, I want to file a complaint or submit a complaint. We have the form that is offered. If it's something, but obviously, we train our staff to try and resolve conflicts at the lowest level to not necessarily necessitate getting into the UCP process that would, or in uniform complaint that would require. To not necessarily necessitate getting into the U C P process that would, or in uniform complaint that requires. A sensitive investigation if this handled, because they, they're able to handle that a little bit. Secondly, to your question related to the transfer. Anytime there is a transfer that comes from my signature and bullying is indicated. I make a personal phone call to the family to see why they indicated that and I also check the system to see that. On the actual transfer, if the transfer form says due to.
Well, I'm a little worried about eh, the parent don't know that can make a writing complaint. And the personnel not offering a re- uh, writing complaint, so that lack of communication right there uh, can happen. So maybe that's something that we want to keep in mind.
Yeah, I don't know exactly the circumstances while those engagements took place because principals and supervisors like to handle.
Yeah, because if you talk to the teacher and another person and the principal and. It didn't start the bullying, that is giving us a message that something is not being done. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I just have a, a, a question for uh, Dr. Hernandez. I'm not familiar whether or not, but in, in Salina Junior High School District. Uh, when I left the district, we were providing um. Canceling tutoring to parents through the wellness centers that we built years ago. Do you have any wellness centers?
And you said for parents or for families?
Parents in general, parents.
We do offer.
They're struggling with bullying and all that stuff.
Yes, we do, we have several programs, we have resources to the family resources centers. We also have partners for peace that offer courses for parents uh, related to different issues pertaining to social emotional. Behavior and then there's also support directly on the sites by counselors that can support parents and families. We also have Daybreak, uh, Telehealth, and I know the high school use, district uses as well. Or individual uh, therapy and for family support and there are needs that are requiring counsel.
Okay, thank you. Wait, before we sit down, I have one other question also. Um, given that um, the previous uh, inner district request did not include bullying. Um, and that is one of your criteria now, childcare is not, did your policy change from last year?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're now strictly.
The four things, okay, got it.
Okay. Any other questions? Now I'm going to close the hearing and the board will deliberate. So any? Comments from the board? About this issue?
Well, it, it seems pretty clear that this family's been caught. In a policy change of the board of the elementary school district. The, the older son had his interdistrict transfer approved. And now the same, in essence, interdistrict transfer, you know, for childcare, now they're not doing that anymore. Um, which I, as we've discussed before, understand uh, uh, declining enrollment. And the reason why the district is doing this, you know, but we have to, looking at this. Is it? Appropriate from our perspective that the one child. Was treated one way and now the same, same circumstance being treated a, a different way. I'm gonna say very honestly to the family, I think regardless of what happens here, you should expect. To not have these approved going forward or be prepared for that. Um, but it's obvious that this is, you know, this family's been caught in the, literally in the transition from the board, their board policy being. A and now their policy is B, which does not include childcare.
Any other deliberations from the board? Um, my concern for this family is the split between the brothers. I think it's very, very important for families to be together, brothers to be together, just. For ease of childcare and ease of going to school. It's very hard to have children in two different districts. Possibly with two different vacation schedules and that days off from school, it just makes life very difficult. Um, so my concern would be keeping the, the two boys together.
I make a motion.
Uh, Sandra, before your motion, Virginia, I see Sandra has her hand up.
According to the information that we were provided, you know, it is. It is hard really, um, when we deal with these kinds of issues on board. Uh, because in one hand, we have. An elementary district losing their eighty eight. Which is needed, you know, to carry on their businesses. But in the other hand, we have. An issue that is causing. Stress, anxiety, uh, concerns. Uh, about looking for another daycare provider, spreading the kids apart. Uh, and. I can vision that not being healthy for those kids. So I'm torn apart between these two scenarios, but. I am, I need to be. And focusing more in the welfare. Of the support of the care provider to the siblings and their families. Because nowadays, eh, this is an issue and, and we're beginning to see one and one and one coming on board that. Is, 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 is. In comparison to previous years? We never have so many, you know, appeals as we're doing now. So I feel like, damn, you know, I don't wanna go against this or against this, so I'm, I'm cutting the mill. But I think my, my responsibility is to focus more into the welfare of the kid.
Alright, thank you, Virginia.
Yeah, I made the motion to approve the transfer of someone, something.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, um. Let's see what I do. The child um, for appeal number twenty four, twenty five oh four. Will be approved to attend the Santa Rita School District for the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is okay, four, three, oh five, this is gonna be closed session.
By the way, how can you tell? There's supposed to be a slider.
Okay, I'm gonna reconvene the Monterey County Board of Education. I want to announce that the board voted to allow student 24, 2504 to attend the Santa... Is that the right one? Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Sorry. It's student, sorry, 24, 2505 shall be allowed to attend Alisal Union School District for the 25, 26 school year. Okay, now we're going to move... Gosh, I have too many of these. Are we in '06? We're at '06. Okay, we're gonna move to agenda item 612, inter-district transfer appeal number 24, 2506. We're going to move to a closed session.
Okay, I'm gonna pause for just a moment.
Item 6.8, "Letter in Support of North Salinas High School Track and Field Athlete Clara Adams, Page 355." And Jaime is not here to take this item, so Dr. Gus, can you take that item for Jaime?
Yes, so at our last board meeting, Jaime requested that we write a letter of support for the student Sorry, give me one second.
Clara Adams.
Clara Adams, from North Salinas High School, who participated in the track and field event and was deemed to have behaved in an unsportsmanlike way by CIF. And so she was not awarded her title for that race. He requested that a letter of support to get CIF to reconsider their decision be submitted by the county board.
And, point of clarification, not only was she not awarded for the race she won, she was disqualified for her other race.
200.
200, yes.
Move to approve.
Second to approve.
I have a question.
Yeah, can we have a discussion a little bit? Mary?
Well, I was wondering, do we know what's the status of the CIF? Are they even making a consideration? I mean, we're sending all these letters, lots of organizations are sending letters, but I have no idea if they're even making a determination or if they put it on an agenda or if they're just flat out saying, you know, nothing. I haven't heard.
Yeah, not that we know of.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing.
I haven't heard anything.
One second.
I was just wondering.
Sorry, we're hearing the YouTube video. We have not heard anything from CIF. According to KSBW8, when they reached out to CIF, there was no comment from CIF. So.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this item?
Okay, can I?
Oh, I can, I can say something.
Sure.
When I worked doing my research on this topic, I was having a hard time to understand that was disrespectful, the actions of the young lady. You know, people celebrate different, as people deal with a loss of loved one different. Some people will cry, some people start drinking, who knows? So then, for this young lady to do that, I read it, and read it, and over and over and like, what is that disrespect? So I wanted to get a pick back from people that I know, and I asked different people with different criteria and different level of education, and I got the same answer. Everybody agrees that there's nothing wrong that she did. It was just a way to celebrate that she won first place. So I will move to send a letter to this committee to reconsider, get back on what they do.
So my, my thought on that is CIF is asking that that celebration wait till after the track meet, not to happen during the track meet, not that it was necessarily disrespectful. However, I looked through everything that's, that they have, and it seems like this were disproportionate, like the punishment was disproportionate. Maybe there should have been a warning that said, you know what, next time maybe not celebrate during the track meet, you wait till, because my son participates in the track, and they're very strict about what's going on in that field. The coaches aren't, at CIF events, the coaches aren't even allowed onto that field. They're very strict about what's going on in there. So maybe she should have received a warning that this is not appropriate for CIF's rules. But it was severe, it was a severe penalty.
Yeah, the punishment does not meet the requirement.
Right, so.
Well, and she'll never be able to run the 200 that she wasn't allowed to even participate in. It, it, also what I think is unfair too, from my perspective, is why does track and field have such a high standard for decorum and other sports like football, where you can go stand around in the, in the, you know, the, whatever you call it, the end zone and play around, do your dance? That's exactly what she was doing, just not for a different sport. And I understand different sports have different levels, but to ban her, yeah, to ban her from her next sport, her next race, as well as take it away without any thought or discussion seems very disproportionate.
Yes.
Yeah, I have somebody who ran track and somebody who, believe it or not, follows track. Yeah, when I heard this, I'm like, did she, you know, what did she do?
Yeah.
And, you know, was she taunting somebody? Was she rubbing, you know, her victory in the other athlete's face? Which you will see at a track meet, you know, and that, that's, that basically, you know. So, yeah, I, you put it great. There should have been, should have been pulled aside, she said, don't do that again. And if they wanted to send her a formal letter, fine, but to strip her of the title and then prevent her, disqualify her from the next race, that's way over the top, so.
And I don't think they've even given an explanation of why such a horrific punishment. And have they ever not let somebody run the next meet?
They've been very, very, as KSBW asks them for information, they are, they basically.
Lower. Yeah, I couldn't find, I was trying to find any, uh, what do you call it, pre?
Yeah.
Precedent.
Thank you, that's what I'm looking for, any precedence for this decision and their, and their rules and regulations or anything like that, and nothing, nothing came. I read through a lot of things that Cindy sent me, and I couldn't find any precedence for this severity. And, and I also feel like it is the possibility that the coach might have been the one that should be reprimanded, not the.
Not the kid.
Not the kid, because the coach is the one that handed her
Right.
the, the fire extinguisher from the stands. So, you know, punish the adults, perhaps, not the child.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, Mary?
Well, I don't think you should punish anybody.
No, 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 that's not what I mean.
I just, I don't think you should punish anybody if your rules are so obscure that they don't know that they're not supposed to do that specific item. Because if you go back and look at it, it says unsportsmanlike, whatever the wording was.
Race, right.
What's more about it.
Then that's open to.
Interpretation.
Interpretation, so. They just went overboard.
They did.
Yeah, I'm happy to see the good writing of the letter that we're sending to them, because this is a plan of action that we're taking forward, not to mess around with our students, you know? I mean, treat them with equity, respect, and don't just cut them off. Give them a chance and opportunity in life to do better. So, yeah.
That's, that's good.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion? Is there a motion?
We had a motion.
So the letters?
Okay, John. I'm sorry. Wait, John moved?
Yeah.
And Virginia seconded.
John moved first.
I went first.
Okay, we've got, okay. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay. We're on 6.9, "Approval of Advocacy Letter in Support of the Migrant Education Program," Page 359. Dr. Gus?
Yes, so you may recall at our last meeting, I mentioned that our migrant program, or I shouldn't say our migrant program, the migrant program is on the fiscal year '26, proposed administration's budget to be cut, along with a couple of others. But this program to us is extremely important. This is a $14 million program that supports very vulnerable students that without these services, may not be as successful in school. These particular services really provide that additional support that our students need. And it is the intent of our office to raise awareness about these cuts and to garner the support from this county board and any other individual that would like to show their support for this program by writing advocacy letters to our representatives that represent us.
Any questions or discussions on this item?
Move to approve.
Second to approve.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Seconded by three people.
Yes.
Can I just add a comment?
Sure.
Because when we were at CSBA, I was in the. Because when we were at CSBA, I was in the um funding task force. It's for delegate assembly where I represent us as well as um uh San Benito and uh San Luis Obispo Counties and Santa Cruz, four counties. And um they asked us what affects our programs most with cuts for the federal funding. And I talked about this after giving, after having met with Colleen and with Dineen about this, and I made, you know, people didn't understand, even from the county, other county offices, office representatives, didn't understand how big of a program it is in our part of the state. Um, and so I tried to put it forward. Um, I don't know how much success I had with it because it was like other other entities, even other county offices didn't understand how much it was. It was much more of a of a focus on head start, but because everybody had that. So, but I do think we really need to move this forward because it's for the the students who benefit from these programs. It it's pretty incredible how important this is to them, and we're trying to keep their education coherent as they move from place to place. And without these funds, it's really hard to do that. So, thank you, just, you know, I'll keep at it as much as I can. I followed up with them. They haven't even told me, you know, like I asked for a draft of what they were going to send out on behalf of CSBA, and they haven't sent it to me, so I don't even know if it's being listened to.
Yeah, Mike, can I just make a comment on that one? I think we are the ones who are awakening the
Yeah.
the giant on this one. Um, as soon as we saw the budget, because we know how impactful this program is, and this would be a major, major loss of support for our students and our families. We really um jumped right on it, began the advocacy efforts, and because we have already been writing the letters and working at garnering the support. Now, the California County Superintendents, it's much more on their radar, and so we have now had at least three conversations about this. Prior to this morning's board meeting, uh at eight thirty this morning, we were in a meeting with our um advocate in Washington, and um it it's actually a twofold problem. The current funding that we should be receiving, the forward funded, because this is a forward funded program, should, the funding should have been received at uh the California Department of Education. It has not yet been released. Um, the, and there's no statement from the, what was the name of that group, the Office of Management and Budget as to when this funding would be um or the award letters would be sent to the states. And so it's not just this program, it's also Title II and
Title III.
Title III funding that has also not been released. The state of California um can't really launch a lawsuit to try to retrieve those dollars unless we get, they get something in writing saying that, no, they're never going to get them. And so um basically, they said this morning that as of June twenty-fifth, there they have to just kind of sit and wait, but by June thirtieth, then they might be able to do a little bit more than they're doing now. Um, they did use the word impoundment.
Right.
Which I I've not ever heard that term before, but I am guessing that that means like reclaiming the dollars. It might be what the federal government is trying to do here. Um, this, we've never seen anything like this before, is what the advocate said. And so we need to, one, advocate for the dollars that should have been forward funded to be released. And then this advocacy letter is to make sure that the program stays intact. And so um we were thanked for sharing our Google Drive with all the advocacy letters, because we already have partner agencies who are submitting letters and um just multiple uh letters coming from a variety of individuals in support of our migrant program. And so I think we're leading the effort, at least in our small way.
Well, we should.
Yeah, so I think now you'll hear more and more about it because people are realizing, oh, this is really happening.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seeing none, motion passes. Um, see, we are on to item seven unfinished. There's none. Item eight, eight point two, Gladio, update page three seventy-three, Dr. Portis.
It's a.
Um, so good afternoon, good afternoon, good late morning, almost afternoon uh to the board and to um members of the public who are listening and staff. Um, so we had a discussion, we've been having discussions on the Gladio platform. Um, since it's uh before it's launched, when the board asked to have this as a focal point, um as one of the schools. And um so, no, a small presentation for you. We were working directly with Gladio and um Grace Cho to uh to get us some information for you. Um, before walking through this, a very brief um slide of presentation, a couple of points to just kind of hitch up to speed. Um, we did get this launched underway in September of twenty-four, so um it's uh been pretty much an entire academic year. And um so we wanted to work with them to try to get what information he had as the request from this board regarding some of the analytics. Uh, in during that conversation, um which we had with them, probably it was in almost a month and a half since we've had the request conversation. Um, I think it's important to note that um we're receiving a lot of support from Grace. We've been having conversations along with Dr. Gus in regards to um how we can collaborate with our community college partners, as well as our four university partners, who have all shown interest in in some way or another, participating with the platform, or at least interest in terms of what this platform has to offer and how it might fit in with programs that they have gone with their students. So we're having those dialogues with them, and we're continuing to kind of flesh that out a little bit, also understanding that um there is a um the previous Bay Area Consortium that worked with Gladio um is coming to a close. Um, but uh so whether or not that's going to be offered as a free for free access to community colleges um at this point doesn't look likely, although in conversation with Grace, they're still investigating, my guess is not. So um the offer to have them join partnership with us um would be a benefit for them. Again, we're we're waiting on those conversations with more and and give you more information as we proceed. The other uh activity that we've been in the midst of is wa- walking through this platform with our community partners. So those agencies that could potentially be hiring our students or providing internships for our students or resources for our students in our direct community. Um, we're getting those conversations with them as well, um trying to explain what the platform looks like, uh what the aspects of the platform um do and how it can support them in their business. Uh, so for example, Norm Group, which is the Farm Bureau Director, Executive Director, when in conversation with him, he really liked the platform partially because it helps to spread the word about what agriculture looks like in our county. Um, the need for uh informed and educated students to help lead the way, and um wanted to have their presence available on it, uh is an example. Yeah, one of the requests that we had for those agencies, uh give us info, if you have an interest, number one, we'll walk them through this whole process. Give us information. What 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 do you need for us to put on the platform that sort of touts what you offer for our students and for the community? Um, and there's an opportunity for a short video on Gladio platform, uh whether they have something or we can um we'll our video capacity to create something for them, we put that offer as well. And um so, and then a number of them have website presence already, so the question, just give us whatever your current website connections look like, so that we can put that on board. So um there's a little bit of legwork on their part. Um, however, we're able and ready to assist of them, and so that's a helpful process. I think more so for our community college partners, uh gives them also a moment of pause to consider what do they have on their website, and is it something, number one, is it accurate for what they want for known purposes, but number two, is it accurately reflecting uh the resources that our students can gain from them? So we're in conversations with our community partners. It's a little slow going. Uh, I think oftentimes we get a good reception, but then give it a week or two and it slows down, and we need to kind of follow back up again, and that's just the way it goes in life, I think. Um, so we're we're working with them. I think there's a good understanding of what we want to offer, so bear with us as we continue that conversation. The other piece that I think is important, as you look at this analytics, um the um, we have been taking Gladio on the road with us everywhere that we can. And uh Terry Pimentel um is 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 fantastic. She's very, very good at this. And so um we have a table, we have the the um the skirt for the table, it says Gladio on it, and we have the index cards with the uh with uh EPC code on it, and um so wherever there are students that can have access to this, we're there, and uh it's been very popular. And uh we've dragged the student over to the table, we give them a uh an iPad and say, okay, here's the platform, check it out, see what you think. Have them do the little quiz, they really enjoy that. Um, Terry's even gone as far as to have little stickers that say, you know, I'm a creator or I'm a producer, whatever it may be. So they really like that, and it has other students go, oh, where'd you get that? And so you come back. Um, we have these great little back scratchers that are for schwag, which are like spotlights. So anyway, we um, we have been um opening up the opportunity for students to play with the platform and see what it looks like. The reason I bring that up for you, aside from letting you know that we are trying to advertise well, is that um the analytics are gonna um bear that a little. So when you see the numbers, bear in mind that you may have um thirty hits uh or thirty students taking the quiz because we're in the middle of demonstrating it. So we're open, every time we open it up, it's a hit, but we're opening it up a lot because we're showing it to people. So just bear in mind that that there's a little bit of, I call it pollution of the data, only that because we're using it for for the dog and pony shows. So um I don't think that's a a bad effect, but I just wanted you to be aware that some of that's that we've been thinking of. So um, again, launched in twenty twenty-four. Here are some of the metrics that were provided by Gladio. Um, again, um there's the launch date, and this day is reflective of mid-June. Uh, when we first put the request out for them. And uh so you can see there what it looks like. I think a piece that that I I particularly like about this um were the spotlight videos piece that's on the bottom left corner, there are four hundred and thirty-two spotlight videos. As you recall, there are these inspirational videos that students can access to help give a little little snout, they're like thirty seconds to a minute. Um, and uh those have been very popular with the students. They really like it, I think, partially because they're the age of the people that are presenting are within their range, very accessible for them, and they're giving us a lot of feedback. Um, when we were speaking with them about how we can improve that. So I think the videos is a nice access point for students to tell us what they think is good and not good about the the uh Gladio platform. And it's been allowing us to have a conversation with Griggs Cho to say, hey, this is what we're hearing, what do you think? And so Gladio's sort of working on improving their platform as a result of it. The other piece that I think is useful information, the average time on site, uh seven minutes and thirty-three. Um, that's a lot of time when you consider um young people, you know, um they're 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 very uh they maneuver through these websites very fast, and they read very quickly. And um for their, for the average time to be that long, um it's pretty, it's it's good, especially if the students are the ones that are looking at it. We want to get that average time a little longer when we have students kind of reviewing sort of the um the different agencies that provide information to them, and I think that will, as we flush the site out more, and we get more detailed information for them, but it's a really great start, I think. In regards to what we're seeing. Uh, this table here will give you an idea, um kind of asked in terms of uh some of the details, you can take a look at it there in terms of what you're seeing. Um, and um some good information to have, and that's available for you on the packet. Um, it's more of a just a data format for you. And then last but not least, I think the um, these were some of the the ones that are most common that are being clicked on, and um so it's pretty good. I think we're we're missing a couple pieces in there that we know of, um specifically uh in agriculture. While it shows these profiles there, engineer technician, um with some of the links don't give you directly access, you have to kind of work around to get to it, and we're aware of that, so we want to fix that because we're in the area. You know, in this county, that's that's a big area to look at. So um this helps us kind of develop a little bit more of sort of target pieces. And um so all in all, I I would hope the board is proud of the efforts that we've made. I think we've done a lot of work with it, um because we started sort of from scratch. Um, we really um have an opportunity to develop it like we want to, and we've learned a lot of lessons. I really want to compliment Grace Cho and her team from Gladio. They've been very responsive. I think partially because they know, hey, this is a good a good feather in their cap, but also that they know that we want this to work well. And so um I'll be meeting with her again soon, I think it's late August, um to kind of take the next step in terms of developing. They are going to help us uh work with some of the partner agencies to develop the website more. So some of the legwork will be picked up on their end. Um, and so we paid for a couple of aspects of the site that we're not really using, and so we're going to divert some of the funding over to an area that we can use more help in. Um, so, and one of those being just help us work with the agency to give this more. So um, I don't know if you have any other questions, uh Dr. Gus?
Can I just add in there that the other thing that we are asking them to add is the tab that would be a scholarship tab?
Oh.
Did you say this?
No, no, I didn't, but that's good. Thank you, I forgot.
Yeah, because like the high school students all get notified by their counselor with various scholarship opportunities. But as you know, you know, what if you missed that? It would be very nice to have one place where any of the scholarship providers would like to put their scholarships that are available on that tab. And then once we start training seniors to go to that tab and look for scholarships, I think it's gonna be a nice feature for the students' families. So we're, that's in the works.
All right, connect.
Um, I was just wondering how our interface with you know, the counselors at the schools is going and whether, you know, this is becoming, I mean, I I love the idea of the scholarship thing because that will drive students who who are academically inclined to maybe go on to four-year colleges, but who still might not know what profession they want to go into um to go to it, as well as the students who aren't going on to four-year colleges, because that's, I think, who we were trying to address, is the the kids who aren't immediately going to college. What are you gonna do with your lives kind of thing? And so the more that they can use this free site to help guide people, I mean, this this would have been great for me. I know personally, if I had been able to take a a quiz like this, and it is very easy to access and play around with, so, I mean, and and do we do it in our own schools already, like?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we've had uh the alt- alternative education students take the assessment.
That's great.
Um, this past year, we piloted three, uh really two and a half. Um, we piloted um uh this one. Uh, we also piloted the uh career launch. That was uh uh mini lessons that our counselor provided for the students. And then we did the career tree assessment. We're still waiting on doing the posters, so that's the other half. But yeah, Gladio, uh the career tree, they seem to complement themselves very well because Gladio really points to the industries that the students are interested. Well, the career launch gives you all of the soft skills, for example, interviewing techniques, resume building, um even how to shake a hand, how to, you know, have icon, really the soft skills that um not only the knowledge of the industry, but then how to really market yourself and sell yourself. Um, some of our students established LinkedIn accounts, for example, uh with their profiles, they've developed resumes, et cetera, so it's been very complimentary. We used to have, um which we're trying to find the space for it because it does overlap, but we had this program called Virtual Job Shadow. And it had components of Gladio and Career Launch, um very similar to what we did in high school. You take an assessment, it talks a little bit about your personal strengths, but then what industry is better suited for you? Um, we're finding that Gladio, certainly it's an updated format, so the the interface is a lot more attractive to young people rather than a traditional um multiple question answer. I think the interface is really appealing. It doesn't surprise me that students are on their seven minutes because it is really engaging. The from the graphics to the approach, the whole platform is more appealing than a traditional, here's an assessment online Q and A, I mean, a multiple question, right? And so we're looking to phase out Virtual Job Shadow, and then with the full implementation of Gladio, and then with a complimentary element of the career launch with the so- the soft skills, and then finally with the career tree. Because in the sequence is identify your strengths, identify the career sectors that your personality. your personality, your character, your strengths are better suited for. Now, these are the different layers, what are the career treat as well as it expands the layer. So when people say, I want to go into the medical field, you know, there are hundreds and thousands of jobs in the medical field. It doesn't mean you have to be a doctor. If you want to do that, absolutely, be a physician. But there's so many other layers from entry to mid to high level, right? And so that's what we're finding. Um, yeah, now, next year, um, it's a little different because of the, um, uh, the, the internet access. But in some shape, we're looking to expand that into our lock facilities. Uh, we're really moving, uh, to have our students, even at Juvenal Hall and at the youth center, have a transition plan. And so given that these are web-based services, we do have some parameters as to what we can expose students to on the internet. But we're looking for ways to have firewalls around Gladio so that the students strictly just go to that site and don't, while the teacher's not looking, have them go navigating somewhere else. So, so those are the kind of parameters that we're trying to build.
That sounds exciting. I, you know, the scholarship thing also made me think of something that ACCBE did, which is they had a presentation from the state about internships throughout the state. And, and they're all required to be paid. And so we should probably link those as well. I'll get the information to you. Because why not get paid to try something out? And then maybe you'll like it, you know, so it's paid. So I'll, I'll make sure we share that information. That would be great.
Yeah.
This, this is exciting. I mean, to see the, the growth. I mean, even if it is because you're bringing it out to students and trying it, but that's, they need to try it, yeah. It's exciting.
Well, and can I just add, I think they alluded to it just a little bit. Um, Ally from our, um, Alternative Education Program hosted that college, uh, and career fair. It, what, there was a beautiful turnout of employers. And it, what was fantastic is, uh, like, I'll give one example, um, is it MST? MST, they literally provided, uh, sheets if, with a high school diploma, here are all the jobs you can get with us. If you have a call, an AA degree, here are the jobs you can get, BA degree, here's, and, and it was beautiful. And so that was the opportunity to say, hey, can we get all of this information from you? We want to load this into Gladio because you are one of the local employers. And so it was beautiful. But the other thing was, um, Terry Pimentel had set up a little booth there. She made stickers that say, like, then, you know, when you take the test, you can be a.
You're the category.
Yeah, whatever category. She made little stickers. So that day, the kids would sit down with her, they'd take the test and then they'd get their little sticker and they were walking around. And then somebody would say, what does that mean? You're a innovator. Oh, go talk, go to, go see Gladio. And so it, we are trying to do more and more things like that that make it fun and entice the kids to take the time to actually use the tool. So it was a great day.
Great, thank you. Any other?
How many businesses have signed up?
We, we've spoken, I would say, to at least a couple dozen locally, um, so far. Um, whether or not, we've had a couple of responses back, but not enough. It's that comes to that, trying to follow back up with them again. So, and that's what we're hoping that Grace will be able to help us do. They have a little bit more bandwidth to keep pressing it harder. Um, but, um, it's developing. If you probably find at least fifteen right now on site that have developed it out a bit more that are local.
So you're making contact with organizations or events that have the businesses, like the Business Excellence Awards by the chambers coming up?
Chamber, we've talked to the chambers folks about that. The Farm Bureau was a big one because of agriculture. Um, the, some of the colleges have their own organizations as well, so we're trying to, you know, inroad on them as well. So if you have any ideas or any thoughts, certainly helpful. We can, any end we can get to channel that out would be great. Sure.
Virginia?
Yes. Do you think would be a good opportunity to have like a meeting and invite all the employers? And give them a presentation, so I'm still going one-to-one with them or it will be. But for me, it, it might be faster to get to them, you present the problem to them all together, whoever gets interested in it. Then you follow up with the ones that say, no, this is not for me. That's okay, we'll leave them for this year. Because once they see that this working with other businesses, they might say, oh, I should kind of move when they invited me.
We did a, I wouldn't call it a dry run, but it was, I'm blanking on the group that came. We, uh, they do the tour every year.
Oh, yeah, um, Leadership Monterey County.
Yeah. And so we did a presentation for them. Uh, it was brief, but it, we explained it and it was very positive. Uh, we didn't hear a lot back, but we gave the information, but I think that's a really great, uh, idea we can expand on, for sure. I think we can do that.
So you say that Monterey Leadership Program?
Oh, yeah, Leadership Monterey County, they come every year and find out what the County Office of Education does. And so we, we share with them a lot of information, but we shared this tool because we knew that they would be, they will go back to their place of business and talk about the tool. But I, I think you're on to something where we've been sending letters and letters and making phone calls. But if the chambers of commerce would let us get on their agenda to make a little presentation, like at one of the galas or, and I don't know if they'll do it at a gala, but even at their monthly meeting, or if we could get them to write an article in, um, you know, the chamber newsletter that they send out, that, that's kind of what we want to pursue next, so.
To me, it makes sense to come from MCOE to make an invitation one day, one place, that, an event just for that. To give a full presentation to employers and say, this is what it is and, and if they have any questions, answer their questions. I think we'll be faster.
I agree.
Than going to, to different organizations. So I'm just thinking they'll do like a mass invitation. Most likely not everybody will show up, but if you do a mass invitation, I'm sure. Because I had done it in the past myself when I sent, and I have a really good response, I, you know, I'm thinking I'm gonna have thirty-five people and I haven't pursued twenty-five people. So you never know.
No, great idea.
I think it's that way you, you set up the invitation, the information you put invitation. Uh, I think that's the key to get their attention first and, um, they're touched their curiosity, what is this?
Thank you. Mary?
I guess I'm the opposite of, uh, what she's saying. I don't think inviting them to you is the way you get them to participate or come. Because they're always gonna say they're busy, the hours are different. But if you meet them where they are, I think you get more, um, more attention because they're already, uh, meeting, they're organized. And all of them have different organizations that meet on a monthly basis. So like the Monterey County Hospitality Association, the Business Council, there's a ton of them out there. And if you get on their agenda instead of asking them to conform to your agenda, I think you get more interest, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think we can do a balance of both. I think, I think, um, as Dr. Gus said, getting on the agenda for some of those meetings. We can hit, you know, try to feed two birds with one hand on that one. And, um, and then at the same time, we could always do a couple of presentations here. I think a good balance between, yeah.
Said Porres, you mentioned a while ago. If we have something on board to share with you to help with Gladio, you know. Um, and what I'd like to share with the staff and, and you is that, uh, in May, five, six and seven, I was invited to participate at the Naleo Policy Institute STEM Education. County members, school district members attended it. They were selected from different states of the nation. Luckily, I was able to get a full scholarship that I didn't have to pay for anything. Uh, in that training, it was interesting to discover that this STEM training, they're not focusing anymore in vocational career. You know, like carpenter, engineering, all this stuff. They wait in a pop region. So what I picked up from them was they're trying to provide the next generation of success to all students across the board. Okay? Uh, and, let's see. So I'd like to share with you which is the ten careers at the global nation. They were not here in twenty, in two, in, in two thousand, year two thousand, but they're here now. Okay? So those careers. Number one, data analyst. Okay, number two, full stack engineer. Number three, fronted developer, social media manager. Number four, web developer, data engineer. Okay, number five, business development specialist. Number six, data scientist. Number seven, human resources businesses partners. And finally, you mentioned a while ago, relationship manager, body language, eye to eye. Okay? In, in year two thousand, they were not in the limbo. Okay? So eventually globally right now, the ten percent of workers that I've been hiring right now at the present time, okay, have job titles that did not existed in two thousand, okay? Now, here this, okay, twenty percent of the new job titles that I shared with you are happening nationwide in the United States. So my question is, I've seen the eight thousand viewers, eighteen hundred viewers that visited Naleo. And out of the eighteen hundred and seventy, almost a thousand visited the registered users, which is one of a kind, okay? But if these new careers can be implemented in this Naleo platform, that would be wonderful.
Of course.
And, um, I would like to send you the link of the, uh, organization who did this STEM presentation in LA for three days. Uh, so you can talk to the lady, the presenters, and get a sense, and also you, Mr. Bella, get a sense of what they're talking about at the Global Society of Job New Titles on board. Because when I was there and I, and there's more information that I have notes, but I'm just sharing this with you. I was like, damn, where are we then? Now we're talking at a global level. What are the new incoming careers that will be asking for you to hire these special people?
I'd welcome.
And these are students that they are targeting, they're targeting, and they're providing these stamps in different school districts.
That'd be wonderful. In fact, we were also.
As well?
Yes, please.
You can follow through.
Thank you.
And it was free and clear, room board, hotel and flight. Bingo. Naleo Conference. Amen.
All right, any other questions?
I just, uh, you mentioned, uh, Farm Bureau, any follow-up with Norm on?
I see him every so often that I remind him, I'll get to you, I'll get to you. So I'll keep, I'll keep pounding the doors. And, and partially because the ag tech industry piece, he did a great, wonderful presentation just a few weeks ago. Um, and, um, about all the job opportunities in, in, in ag tech. And notably, a lot of our community colleagues in that, they're starting to focus. We're in the middle of it, so I'm making a press.
Okay.
If you see him.
I will.
You, edge him along.
All right, thank you. Have a good afternoon. All right, we're on to, uh, item nine, reports from the superintendent's staff.
Okay, well, I'll be very, very quick. Um, first of all, you all have a new board event calendar that has a few more items added to it and the associated flyers. So if you're interested in attending anything on the board calendar, please let Cindy know so she can get you registered. And then, um, only just a couple of things, uh, that I wanted to update you on. The first one is we are, we talked a little bit earlier about the migrant education program where it is already now starting to get more attention as we were sitting here speaking. Uh, we did, did get a request for an interview, which we'll go forth and, um, participate in because we do really need to raise awareness about that. Second thing I just wanted to let you know of was that I had the most wonderful opportunity to speak to a group of about thirty or so students, high school students from all over the county, including, uh, one of the students was even a participant in a virtual ceremony. And the event was hosted by our Monterey County Elections Department. And what they're working on is civic engagement and civic engagement beyond voting, right? Because we all know how important it is that we vote and that we encourage others to vote, but it's so much more. And so I had the wonderful opportunity to speak with the students yesterday. Some of the major topics that we talked about was how important their voices are and are they participating in the LCAP process? Because as you know, um, they are, they are a very powerful voice in that process. And it was kind of eye-opening that a lot of the students, actually, most of the students didn't really know about the LCAP process. When we got into details and we talked about, you know, will your school survey you and they ask you a lot of questions about your needs and your desires. But you also, i- if you feel that your voice isn't being heard, you need to take the time to sit down with your administration, sit down with your school board members who are elected to represent you and make sure that your needs are being met and have those conversations. We talked about in San Lucas, how the students wrote, um, letters to the Board of Supervisors. And then Supervisor Lopez was able to write Brian, get sidewalks and streetlights into that city right there around the school. As that was, because it was the students who raised their voice about the needs. Um, and what would make them feel safer in their communities. And so anyway, we, their takeaways, I got a beautiful thing from the elections department that said they loved the presentation. And at the end of each day, they asked the students to post something that they learned. And here were the takeaways from the students, that they were inspired, that their voices are being heard by higher-ups, that the youth voice is so important and that there are many ways to be heard in their community and how they can make their voice heard. And then I love the last part, our superintendent assists us all, which was lovely. So anyway, just a great day and I was really thrilled that the Elections Department is hosting that leadership event. It's a week-long, um, event where students come and they learn about civic engagement and that is fabulous. Uh, and then lastly, um, I will very likely uh, be needing to reach out to you for some dates for a county committee meeting. So you recall, we did get a petition, the petition was sent to the Elections Department. They did verify that, um, I think there's about eighty-three valid signatures. And we will know by the end of today whether or not that does meet the threshold. We are thinking that it is going to meet the threshold. We just needed to do one more check with the Elections Department to make sure that they actually have all registered voters in that territory. So if in fact, uh, it does turn out that it is a valid petition, which right now it's looking like it most likely will be, then I will need some dates from all of you for the public hearings that we will host in, uh, both of those areas. So look out for a doodle poll, um, and yeah.
What month? Do we have an idea of what month that would be?
Um, well, we do not because I need to work with the districts to find out when they're available. But I am guessing, um, it, it's probably most likely August. Um, if it needs to happen earlier, we're working with Marguerite Leoni on the timeline so that we can do everything that we need to do. We do have, uh, Chrissy White lined up to conduct the feasibility study and then we'll go from there. So once I get that timeline from Marguerite, um, like I said, you're gonna get a doodle poll and that's what it's about. And that drops out.
Thank you so much.
Add a question.
Sure.
Is MCOE, I just read that we are finalists in the Business Excellence Award?
Yes, um, we sent out an email to all of you. Um, the chamber does an event, the Business Excellence Event every year. And there are three finalists for education, MCOE, Chartwell and First Five. Yeah, and we have been a. Yeah, and we have been a finalist once before, um, but we have never won it. And so we hope that all of you are going to cast your vote. You can only vote if you're a member of the chamber. The County Office of Education is a member of the chamber. I know Annette already casted her vote. And so if you haven't done that, please take the time to do so.
You want to just go to the chamber website? I saw.
Um, we sent out the link.
Yeah.
That wasn't working, so I sent them my email.
Oh, yeah, we got a new link.
You got a new.
The second one worked for me.
Worked for you? Okay, uh, we'll give it another try.
Yeah, if, if you try and it doesn't work, let us know and then we'll contact the chamber and.
Okay.
You, you have to use your Monterey COE email in order to vote. Because we're the members as COE. Yeah, that, it worked for me the second time.
I will give it a try.
And if you have friends or neighbors that are members of the chamber.
Really?
Please encourage them to cast their vote.
All right.
I will have a table at the, uh, event?
We can have a table at the event. Yes, I would.
If we win, we want.
I know, I want to be there.
But not when we win.
Yeah.
Oh, I see it right here. July, oh, July seventeenth. Okay.
July seventeenth. So if you are able to make it, we, if you already know now, let us know now so Cindy can get you registered. And if you need to check your calendar, please do let her know, hopefully by the end of this week. Um, yeah, so we're excited.
All our, did, were all the employees sent the same email?
Yes.
Awesome.
And there's six hundred and sixty.
I know, that's what I was thinking. We have a good chance if all the employee, or a lot of them vote.
So all the employees can vote?
Yeah, because they have the Monterey COE email. So. I mean, that's why I thought only Danine could vote. So when it didn't work the first time. But then I just registered with the COE, uh, email and it worked and I was able to vote.
But we would hope that other businesses and.
We're doing the same.
Right.
Would vote for us too.
Right.
Okay, we're on to item ten, comments by board members. Do you have any comments? All right, moving on to, uh, eleven, reports from board members, uh, legislation, John.
Yeah, uh, two things. Um, you know, as we've talked about for the, uh. Uh, migrant ed, you know, it is tied up right now in the big, beautiful bill. One of the reasons it's a, it's a big, beautiful bill is basically everything is in there. It would appear that this is like the last piece of legislation that the current administration wants to see. Go through Congress and then they want to be done with Congress for an extended period of time. So there's so much stuff in it. You know, how it's going to play out, who knows? Um, so, you know, there are so many things that are affected by it. Uh, I've heard a lot of people say that Republicans can't. Do, you know, not pass something. And so it will be something. When, what it'll be and when it'll be, the president has given a July fourth deadline. Everyone seems pretty skeptical about that. But who knows? So that's that. Um, as we heard, the, uh. At the state level, there is a budget agreement. Um, it just, was just, uh, posted by CSBA. That the budget agreement includes the new word troubling, Prop ninety-eight manipulation. Um. Just real quickly, a troubling and continuing sign that Prop ninety-eight is under threat. Is the inclusion of a higher Prop eighty, ninety-eight withholding amount that, that was proposed in the May revise. So it went from one point three billion to one point nine billion, as you probably have all heard and seen from CSBA. Any withholding really doesn't comply with what the state constitution is. Um. Additionally, both the administration and the legislature are referring to this amount not as a withholding. But as a settle up. The distinction is important as settle up is a term used to describe how the state finalizes the Prop ninety-eight amount. When it, when it closes out the prior year. Whereas withholding is a manipulation of the Prop ninety-eight guarantee. So it sounds like we're now splitting hairs. In the event that this gets hauled into court, uh, as unconstitutional. Um, and the concern remains that, you know, if you do it once, it'll, you've opened the door and it'll just be, uh, continue to be done again. My feeling is that, you know, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna stay the way it is. We're running up against the deadline. And then it'll just be a matter of, um, uh, how it gets, uh, handled in court. Uh, so those are legislative updates.
Okay, thank you. Um, Community Human Services, Annette?
Uh, we haven't met, uh, since the last time we had a meeting. We have a bunch of meetings for us, so. Um, but as I mentioned at the end of our last meeting. Um, Community Human Services Annual Luncheon is on July seventeenth. So those of you who would like to learn more about Community Human Services. Um, Cindy has it on our board events calendar. So, and, um, I think she separately sent out a. Um, an invitation. So anyone who's in town and would like to go, it would be a great opportunity to learn more about that agency. That we're all, uh, part of.
Thank you, Annette. Uh, Child Abuse Prevention Council, our next meeting is on August fourth. Um, Monterey County School Boards Association, Mary?
No meeting.
All right, item twelve, consideration for future agenda or resolutions. All right, seeing none, our next meeting date will be July sixteenth at nine A.M. I will be calling in for that meeting. Uh, agenda items are due on July third, two thousand twenty-five. And I would like to close the meeting in memory of Emma Victoria Garcia. Is adjourned. Thank you.
And there's food in the kitchen.